Okay, Madam Chair, the meeting is recording.
Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody, to the Town Council meeting for tonight, Monday, September 14th. It's a little late at seven. It's about, I have 7:03, I believe, calling the meeting's order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Valerie DiPaolo?
Here.
William Deezick?
Present.
Tom Lombardi?
Here.
James Morelli? Jim, are you there?
Here, yes, sorry.
Christopher Pomerai?
Here.
Christopher Pulis?
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky?
Here.
Michael Del Santo?
Present.
Victoria Triano?
Here. Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, would you start us off in a prayer, please?
Yes. Dear heavenly Father, we come to this evening asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Southington and her people. Amen.
Amen. Shall we all stand for the flag salute if you can? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We have a motion on minutes from our prior meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the August 10th minutes from the Town Council.
Do you have a second?
A second, that, Del Santo.
Um, okay. Paul, I think your hand was up first, so I'm going to put you down as seconding the minutes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All those interested, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any deletions or additions? Hearing none, I will accept it as a unanimous vote. Thank you, everybody. Our first order of business, which is not really on the agenda, is a proclamation for Jane Neville. And Valerie got in touch with me, and she told me that Jane is moving, and I guess she has already. But we wanted to make sure that she's recognized for her many, many years of helping wildlife here in Southington. Many of you know that Jane was the president and founder of the Mount Vernon Songbird Sanctuary up on Mount Vernon Road. And for years, for decades, she has been there to help with any sparrow that fell from the sky. And so Val approached me. I said, this would be a wonderful time to recognize Jane. So Val, I'm going to read the proclamation, if that's okay with you. I have it in front of me.
Sure, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Town Council official proclamation, be it hereby known that all of the Southington Town Council hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Jane Neville. Jane Neville is founder and president of the Mount Vernon Songbird Sanctuary Incorporated of Southington. Mount Vernon Songbird Sanctuary is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the conservation of migratory songbirds through education, rehabilitation, and preservation of their habitat. With the help of committed volunteers, Jane has maintained the sanctuary on four and a half acres of land in Southington, and has enthusiastically provided her extensive knowledge, expertise, and love for what she is doing in our Southington community. Jane has cared for over 2,000 birds in the last 23 years. She holds federal and state permits with an expertise focused on warblers, flycatchers, hummingbirds, chimney swifts, and swallows and killdeer. She is the past president and president of the Connecticut Wildlife Rehabilitators Association. Now therefore be resolved that Valerie DiPaolo and I, Victoria Triano, Southington Town Council chairwoman, on behalf of the entire Town Council, do hereby acknowledge her for her achievement. And it's dated this day, and Val DiPaolo is signing it, and I'm co-signing it with her. And we want to just congratulate Jane for all of her years of dedication to the birds and the wildlife of this country, of this community. We are going to miss her greatly. When anybody would call with a bird with a broken wing, or a problem with a bird, they found an injured bird, they would call Jane. And so we are going to miss her. She was such a valuable asset. Val, did you want to add anything to this?
Yes, thanks. Thanks so much, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to say that I had the privilege of being on Jane's Board of Directors for a brief period, and was able to visit the sanctuary and just really see firsthand what Jane did, you know, as a rehabilitator and everything that she's offered. And she clearly has the knowledge and the expertise, but her, you know, her passion for what she was doing, and her genuine compassion and care for the wildlife, I think that's what really sticks with me and what impressed me the most. So I know she's, it was difficult. I just spoke to her this weekend. It was difficult to pack up and leave for Florida. And I think on behalf of our town, you know, just a really big thank you to Jane for everything she did for us, for our community.
Absolutely. And we're going to make sure she receives this. She may very well be on the line. I don't see her on the line, but she may very, she's been invited to tune in from Florida. But we're going to make sure that we get that proclamation to her so that she will know that the entire community really appreciated all of her years of service. Thank you, Val, so much.
Great. Yep, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Very good. All right, so we want to get into councilperson's communication.
Madam Chair.
Del Santo, yes?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Mike Del Santo. I have something for Councilmatic Communications.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to take a minute to apologize to my fellow Town Councilors for the distraction brought on by some residents and some members of the public these last few weeks. I posted something on my personal social media page that was offensive to some residents. I removed the post and apologized. I'm now ready to move on and assist in the governance of Town Matters. I want to thank the hundreds of town residents that emailed, called, sent letters, texted, and privately messaged me with their support over these last few weeks. And I also want to extend a special thanks to Councilwoman Val DiPaolo for her friendship, support, education, and guidance throughout this matter. If Southington residents sincerely feel as though I should no longer serve as a Southington Town Councilor, they'll have the opportunity to make that decision for me on Election Day, November 2021. I do not wish to further discuss this issue again. As I said, it's time to move forward. I'm very certain the residents who want me to further clarify my intentions or actions will never be satisfied with my response, so I choose not to further comment upon it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Any other Councilmatic Communications? Uh, Paul?
Madam Chair, yeah, I just had, I had two items that I wanted to discuss. The first was attending the 9/11 memorial service this past week was a very nicely done, as it's been done in the past years as well. I want to thank the first responders in town and the organizations that came out to make that happen. It was a very nice tribute, and very much appreciate the, all of the efforts that went behind there. And in line with that also, there was a nice, there was a nice car parade that I also attended. I know that a number of you also attended, that also was in support of our first responders. So it was a very nice day overall. A nice tribute to all of those who give so selfishly in all that they do in their line of duty, whether it's, you know, paid volunteer, or just raising their hand to help out. So very nice activities this weekend.
Yeah, I agree with you, Paul. It was very, very moving, very good. Who else? Yeah, Chris Pulis, I see your hand, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two things I wanted to comment on. One of the privileges I've had in recent months has been serving on the Volunteer Firefighter Recruitment Committee. And while we haven't had an opportunity to meet because of the COVID, I did receive some news, and you may recall, if you're familiar with some of the firefighters, that Kevin Sal Mary from Company Three was on the recruitment committee but left because he pursued a full-time job in Enfield. Well, in August, we got word that he would be coming back to Southington to begin his career in our town, which is, it's just so great to bring back talent into our town for our fire department. And it speaks to our Southington Fire Department as a great place to work, and that people, there might not be a job for them at a point. They have to go out, but then they just say, get back in when they can. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I also wanted, the second thing I wanted to acknowledge was the entire Board of Education, teaching staff, administrative staff, and support staff of our public school system that successfully brought our kids back to school these past couple of weeks. As everyone knows, I'm in public education, so I understand like the complexities of opening a school, let alone during the current health situation. As a parent, I have an elementary school student and a middle school student. All of the details throughout the summer were communicated to us through Superintendent Canelin. And the faculty, the teachers and administrators have just been wonderful in talking, communicating to parents, and making kids feel safe going back to school. These people are heroes. They're taking a step forward, and I just want to applaud the, our education team. And with that, there's one more great announcement. We all may remember from past spring that Cara Seville from Kennedy Middle School was the district's Teacher of the Year. Now, if you don't know about Cara, she's a literacy specialist. She's a Changemaker Fellow at the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. She was a founding member of the Anna Grace Project. She received many grants, including a Fund for Teachers grant that sent her to Bali to pursue professional learning. And every single step of the way, Cara, her motivation has been to help her colleagues and scale her effectiveness with other students across the district and beyond. And I don't know if, because communication is kind of tied down during the COVID, I want to congratulate her for recently being selected as a semifinalist for the State Teacher of the Year Award, which is a great accomplishment. There are 15 semifinalists out of over 100 districts, and that's just an attribute to the quality and the talent that we have in Southington. And we want to make sure that we recognize that in our teachers as we go into this unprecedented, uncertain school year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Who else? Does anybody else have any Councilmatic Communications?
Madam, Madam.
Yep, I see, I see Val, and I see Tom. Tom, why don't you go first? Val, I think you went right after that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I know the council received an email from the Town Manager mid-August, but I wanted to send a congratulations to our new Director of Public Works, Annette Turnquist. Many of us on here are familiar with Annette. She's been with the town for several years, and I believe the Town Manager will be bringing this discussion up later on during his report. But congratulations to our new Public Works Director. And also thanks to Keith Hayden, who retired June 30th, I believe it was. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Val?
Yep. Madam Chair, just a quick reminder, for October at SOCA, the What is Color? What is Race? A Presentation of Black, that will be taking place the entire month of October. And they have a lot of wonderful workshops getting set up already, but because of COVID, it would be really great if people, if they want to attend, if they can go on SOCA's website, or call SOCA and register, because they're trying to keep the numbers reasonable for each session. So it looks really, really good, and I hope that a lot of people in town will be able to take advantage of it.
Yeah, I think it's going to be very good. Yeah, thank you, Val.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Val. Val, were those meetings going to be virtual, or are they going to be in person?
They're going to be, I believe they're going to be in person, Mike. I'm not sure if they might be, you know, videoing them, and then they'll have them, you know, they can play afterwards. People can, I'll find out, but.
I have the picture.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I think they are going to be in person.
I don't know where to turn on this. Jim, did you have your hand up? Jim Morelli?
I did.
I just wanted to. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Jim. It would just be really helpful, even if the council members, whoever's not speaking, if we could put our phones on mute, that'll really help. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Madam Chair, I just wanted to tell a, tell us a little.
Not yet. I'm trying to figure how long it takes.
In line with what Paul had to say about the 9/11 ceremonies, it was a pleasure to be invited to attend. As some of you know, I was invited, and last minute, I decided to actually write in the tribute on Friday night. And I have to say that I think Suz Abahansky did a phenomenal job aligning everybody at the Pilgrim Furniture parking lot. I met a lot of nice people there. I had a really enjoyable time, and it was really gratifying to see so many people on the route waving flags and cheering us on. So I did want to say thank you for her efforts on that. And I was really glad to represent Southington in that motorcade. That's it for me. Thank you. So you guys didn't hear any of that?
We heard you. Madam Chair, you might be on mute.
Oh, yeah, here I am. Yeah, I'm okay. All right. There we go. I just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. I have a few things. I did want to also mention the 9/11, both the morning service that we do, and of course, the motorcade that was established. Suz Abahansky and her friends got together to do a wonderful job. We must always remember that 2,977 people lost their lives on 9/11, and that 343 New York City firefighters died that day, 23 New York City police officers, and 37 Port Authority officers died that day. And so it is a solemn, but it's also one of the most moving days for people that come together. We just appreciate our firefighters, our police officers, and our EMTs, all our first responders. I also want, I have a, I have, oh, I wanted to recognize our own firefighters. Last night, we had a pretty major fire in town, and our firefighters worked all through the night. And under the direction of Deputy Fire Chief Jimmy Paul, they were able to take care of the house fire, and are currently still working to investigate the fire. But it's just a great shout out to our members of our firefighting team that put their lives on the line all the time. And certainly, when you start thinking about 9/11, you think about the selfless acts of our first responders. But I do have a great announcement tonight I want to share with everyone. And let me just read it a little bit to you, and then I'll give you the specifics of what's going on in Southington. The USDA approved $1.2 billion in contracts for the Farmers to Families Food Box Program, designed to connect excess meat, dairy, and produce on farms with families that face food insecurity. The funding far exceeds the $100 million per month the department initially planned for the program due to the interest and the need. The program will purchase now $461 million in fresh fruits and vegetables, $317 million in dairy, $258 million in meats, and $175 million in a combination box of fresh produce, dairy, or meat products. The American Farm Bureau Federation and Feeding America, country's largest hungry relief organization, sent a letter to the USDA requesting a nimble approach to quickly and effectively get food from America's farms to the nation's food banks and others who are in need of food. Now, this is the exciting part. Curtis and Sheila, the Curtis and Sheila Robinson Foundation got involved quickly so that they would ensure that Southington would be part of this food giveaway. And starting in October 2020, next month, for 10 weeks, 1,421-pound boxes, let me say that again so you understand, 1,400 boxes of prepackaged organic meat, dairy, fruit, and vegetables would be delivered to Southington and distributed through our own community services. Though, understanding that the winter months are coming upon us, the foundation felt that would be a blessing for our community. Once again, Sheila and Curtis Robinson stand up and take care of those that are in need. Now, let me explain something to everybody. This program, you do not have to be on food stamps or qualified in any way. You just have to have a need for extra food for your family. So there's no forms to fill out. There's nothing that can dequalify you. If you are hungry, if your family needs it, you will be eligible to receive a box of organic produce and meats and whatever they have for that month. And it was starting in October. But I also want to tell you this. We're not waiting till October. Janet was able to secure through the connections with the foundation, with the Sheila and Curtis Robinson Foundation, an ability to get in 200 boxes, 250 boxes, excuse me, 250 boxes of produce coming this Saturday, the 12th. And if you are in need, we have 250 boxes that are going to be distributed around 11 o'clock in the morning at Community Services. And so just go, we think the boxes will be there by 11, but if they're not quite there at 11, just relax, bring a magazine, read a little bit. The boxes will be there shortly thereafter. Again, if you need food, just come out. We're going to have 250 boxes. I just want to thank Janet, and Linda Mendelson's on, is on the meeting this evening. I want to thank everyone. Paul Champagne is, is working so closely. And Paul Champagne, he, most of you know, he's been on the Town Council, and now he's working very, volunteering with Janet. He is coordinating volunteer efforts. If you would like to help in the distribution of this food, please call Community Services, ask for Paul Champagne. If you are in need of the food, please come out this Saturday, the 12th, at 11 o'clock, and get some fresh produce. They don't have any meat this month, but fresh produce. Next month, in October, there'll be bigger boxes and more of a variety. But I just want to, I'm just so happy and pleased, and I want to formally thank Curtis and Sheila Robinson for once again stepping in and helping us here in town feed people who need the food. So I just wanted to tell everybody. I don't know if anybody has any questions right now. Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's, it's really heartwarming to hear messages like this, especially times, especially times like now with COVID and with the job losses that we've had across the country, across the state, and even in our community. There are people in town who are business owners, whose businesses are shuttered, or they're hanging on, and they're people who have lost their jobs. They're, you know, hoping to get back up and running as quickly as possible. And even, you know, others who are touched during this pandemic. This is really heartwarming. And, you know, the Curtis and Sheila Robinson have been such gracious members in our community for such a long time. This is only the most recent thing. You know, there's been other significant investments that they've made, whether it's apparatus for our emergency responders, you know, body cameras. There's been so much that's gone on. And, you know, I'd like to nominate them for one of our awards that we give in a proclamation to them for all of the work and the dedication that they've done in our, in our community.
Thank you, Paul. I'm sure we all agree on that. And maybe you and I can talk a little bit more about it, and I think that's wonderful.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I can just touch, you know, one of the other things that I'd like to highlight is a shout out to Mark Ramsey and the LEAF program for doing a great, a great event this past weekend. You know, they did what's called the Harvest Hoedown, which, you know, many of you might have remembered the previous dinners that have been on the town green. Those couldn't be done. As a substitute, the LEAF program did a fundraising activity to bring our community together to, to still have the, the fresh produce and the meal available to everybody. They, they made the, they made the food available with the ingredients and the recipes. They made videos to show everybody how to do it. And it was really nice to have that in our community as well. Mark Ramsey and the LEAF program. Everybody who's there, a tremendous asset.
He's wonderful. Okay, I saw some other hands. Chris Pulis, did you have your, did you have your, I'm sorry. Did anybody else have anything else to say? Oh, Val, there you go. Go ahead, Val.
Madam Chair, so the, how long, how many months will the boxes be delivered?
Yes, let me just check my notes on that, Val. I believe, I believe it's going to be throughout the winter. It's starting in October. Oh, and it's for 10 weeks. So it says, starting in October of 2020 for 10 weeks, 1,400 boxes of prepackaged organic meat, dairy, fruit, and vegetables will be delivered to Southington. So it's a 10-week program.
So it's on a weekly, people can go there on a weekly basis?
Yes. Yes. And, you know, because there's so many, this Saturday is going to be right at Community Services, but they're looking for a larger venue for the, when we start moving in October, because it's going to be 1,400 people. But right now, for this week, it's going to be at Community Services.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Good stuff happening in Southington. Thank you very much, everybody. Right now, we have the Library Board of Directors, and Christie is here. And we're going to hear more about the library and their strategic plan going forward. Mary, are you going to take the lead, or Christie, who's going to, who's going to speak to us today?
Yeah, Madam Chairwoman, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yep, good. Yep.
Okay, so yes, Christie and myself are along with other fellow board members, Amy Terry Lombardi, Mark LaJoy, Walter Grover, Tina Riquel, and Joanne Kelleher. So Christie, I believe you're going to display the presentation. It will take less than 10 minutes of your time and tell you what we did at the Library Board.
Great. Thank you, Christie.
Need help.
Okay, I've got them off, and I want to see your. I'm not seeing any yet. Very good. Okay, so here's the front page. So again, we appreciate your time tonight. Mary Baker, Chairwoman of the Library Board, I reside at 50 Burnetree Drive. The Board really would like to thank the council for your favorable approval to move forward the library grant application last month, at the last month's meeting. Christie, I think you hear me, you can advance the slide. Paul, give me a thumbs up that you're good to hear me. Yep, excellent. Okay. So as part of the application process for the grant, the library needed to complete a, this is what we are here to talk about tonight, our finalized plan. We're very proud of it. The Director, Christie Sedesky, worked very hard. The Board, as you know, has nine members. Six of the members are new, myself, Terry Lombardi, Mark LaJoy, Johanna Fergalack, Tina Riquel. And we join longer-serving members, Walter Grover, Fran Mead, and Joanne Kelleher. That's four. See? Paul, give me a thumbs. Okay, so yeah.
We can hear you, Mary.
We can hear you. Now you're on the purpose of the Southington Public Library Strategic Plan.
Yeah, I wanted Christie to advance the slide that shows 34 document. Okay, that's, that's the big, that's the big deal. It was a very large document, and you'll each soon receive a copy. It identifies our mission, vision, and values using board, staff, and public opinion. So that's the board directors, the library staff, and the public's opinion. The plan establishes key strategies and goals. So on to our mission, vision, and values. I'm hoping this is incorrect.
It's still on the same, it's still on the same page.
She sees how we're looking to move. There we go. So here's our mission, vision, and values. Answer the questions. Why do we exist? What do we envision for our future? And what are our beliefs? Next. Is next. You'll see our mission statement on the next screen when it works. And if you guys have this in your pocket, Christie, you able to advance? So um, the Southern Public Library provides resources and services for lifelong to serve all of our community. Next. And we created a vision statement. The Southern Public Library will be the welcoming heart of our community. We're serious about that. Where all ages, cultures, and identities safely come to discover, explore, connect, and pursue knowledge and literacy for a higher quality of life. Here is the vision statement as I just read it. So we are focused on providing the resources to enable residents really to create opportunities for themselves. So on the next slide, you'll see our values. We've got the main values are customer patron priority, service excellence, confidentiality, see lifelong learning, diversity, respect, a big shout out to uh the library staff because they really did a great job in adapting and continuing to provide services during COVID. The staff and the board separately brainstormed on what you see here, the values, and we really align on these seven here that were um we hold as important. Excellent. So this is gonna be a real cluttered slide here, but it's our roadmap. So um a big thank you to Terry Lombardi, our Board Treasurer. She led us on this undertaking. She had the experience developing strategic really hard given this constraints of COVID. And the board and the director met virtually every two weeks of summer. Terry laid out the plan, set the schedule. Analog and brainstorming. Act to successfully complete the plan. So uh the next slide, Christie will speak to you on the data sources.
We can't hear.
We can't hear you, Christie. I think you're on mute. Christie, are you calling in on your phone? Because we, all of the folks who are on the phone are on mute. Yeah, we can't, we have no way to identify which person on the phone is uh is you.
So that's okay. We'll continue. Um, it was a big collection here, as you see on your screen. Christie was instrumental in managing all these surveys along with the staff, collecting all of the feedback and really um focus and we took into account COVID. Um, and we really wanted to see in the next three years what we can manage for the future. Terry, did you want to add here?
Yeah, Mary, Christie cannot hear. Here, Christie cannot hear or respond right now. She's asked me to take over.
Oh, okay. So did you have anything more to add to the data sources? I'll move on to the next slide.
Keep, yep, go on.
Okay, good. So next slide. These are our top five critical issues. We're looking at um governance, the bylaws, roles, and policies of facility, technology, performance, culture, and proper services. So you can go to the next slide, please.
The next slide, Christie.
So uh governance, um, we want to further on how we coordinate with the council and communicate. Which, that's the library service for Southern residents. We know we need to establish bylaws and policies. So next slide. We value our staff at the library. We value and professional development. So we want to provide a work atmosphere that values growth, professional development. Having constructive conversations regarding job performance is important to the board. We will work to pile an annual employee evaluation system. Next slide, please. Facility, as you are aware, and the town delayed the referendum for the replacement of the library in November of twenty twenty-one for a referendum. And we'll be returning before the end of the year to have you consider a vote to move that forward. Prior to the new or rehabilitated building, we will be sure to address any facility improvement needed for mechanical, electrical, or safety reasons. And as part of the referendum process, know that the board will engage our very active advocacy committee, which is led by Terry Lombardi. And we also plan to establish a fundraising committee. So on technology here, the board and staff have the goal to increase the amount and variety of computers available at the library. We are also looking to keep them up to date with the latest hardware and software. Next slide. Programs and services. Many may know the library has so many good programs. So if those on the call on the meeting tonight haven't yet, please sign up for the email alerts from the library. They also do a lot of publicity through social media. Um, so there's a plethora of programs. The staff, director, and board will continue the needs of the residents, and we will prioritize the programs we can hold based on available space and the COVID restrictions. So the next slide, please. Next for us here. We're gonna just keep checking off our lists. Um, we're happy that we have the approval. Thank you. And completing the action items we have identified here. So thank you so much for your time tonight. We wanted to keep you uh council members and the public of what accessibility during, but really looking for. So do you have any questions for um?
So Mary, could I ask a question, please? So
Yes.
Um the library is open and uh the libraries, you can go and visit the library. I think uh the computers are not uh, I don't think the computers are available. Is that right?
No, they are available. I don't know.
Oh, they are.
They are available, yes, and they have appointments for, I believe they're limited by time.
Yeah, get back to the library, everybody.
Vicky, if I, if I may, this is Mark. Um, Christie did a great job on the website uh to see exactly what's available to the public. Uh, most, most of their services are available by appointment. So if you have any questions on what's available, please check out the town's website for the public library. Christie and her staff did a great job explaining it.
Tremendous, tremendous job. Thank you, Christie. Thank you uh uh Library Board. It's uh uh things are really happening down there. It's really kind of exciting. So thank you, everybody who's working so hard. Anybody else have any questions? Uh, Chris Palmeri, yes, hi, Chris.
Hi, not really a question, just a comment, just to echo some of what you said. Christie and the whole Library Board, um, little did we know when we put this off, um, what exactly we were embarking into with this app, um, with the pandemic. So I want to thank you all for your patience. Obviously, you have a clear vision moving forward and we really appreciate it. So a-again, here, here's looking to twenty twenty-one for the success for the Library Board. And and again, we just thank you for your patience and understanding for everything we are, we're trying to accomplish.
Excellent, well said, Chris. Very good, anybody?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Yes, um, same thing, to echo other sentiments. I use the library often and they make it really easy. It is, you know, you can order things online and if, you know, it's, if they're closed, they're using the lockers outside. It's very convenient and very easy to do. So utilize the library, folks. It's important.
Excellent, yep. Uh, Val, you had your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to um just let the the Library Board know and and Christie. It's really good to see in the values, um, the diversity items, uh, the respect, uh, even adaptability with technology, you know, to to technology in an in an equitable manner. So um I I just would, maybe some further information at some point about the programs that are being offered, um, just to really make sure that programs are being offered to all of our residents, you know, people of all cultures um and identities, you know, going back to the vision statement. Um, I hope that there's a way to measure that, that that the programs are meeting um the needs of all the community members. Because I I think this is a great, um, it's a great vision statement. So it's a matter then of making sure that it is being carried out, you know, to to everyone in our community. Um, great, great job, though.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? I wanna thank you, Christie. I know it's been a challenge for you tonight with the, with everything I say. I, I'm telling you, it's my nightmare every time we have a meeting that, what if it doesn't work right?
Madam Chair, I I would just like to say that Christie did uh email. She uh she texted me and said that she uh is very apologetic that, for whatever reason, her device kind of blew up right when, right when this started. She had a bad noise and then just couldn't be heard. And um she just apologizes for the uh the inconvenience, but I think things went off without a hitch. So um, thanks for coming and thanks for trying and keeping it going, Christie.
Yep, and also to the the Board of Directors. You guys have been working so hard. This presentation was succinct and clear and uh really gave a a way forward for the library. I can't thank all of you enough. Thank you so much. All right, uh, having no other questions, I want to move forward. Uh, reports from special committees, Public Works, Mike Dale Santo, could you bring us up to date?
Good evening, Madam Chair. We did have a very busy meeting on the second of September, so I'll try to run through it as succinctly and quickly as I could. Uh, Chief Daly from the Police Department reported that the light at the crosswalk at Rec Park um has been repaired. It's rehung. It actually came down during the storm, the ISA storm. So it's rehung, but it's not operational yet. Uh, we are, we work together with the Meriden Traffic Control. So I guess they're putting their heads together and they're eventually gonna uh go ahead and and turn that back on eventually. But there is a crossing guard there for students that happened to cross South End Road to get to South End School. So that should be fixed. Uh, we're hoping within the next week or so. Um, and that was all that Chief Chief Daly had. Um, bulky waste, storm cleanup was very busy, as we all saw. Uh, the staff did a great job. Um, they, there were some complaints about some commercial companies possibly abusing their um their one-time per week. Uh, and the the town staff is doing a good job uh making sure that commercial companies are not utilizing the transfer station more than their one-time allowance per week. Uh, you know, the the transportation is a town of Southington taxpayer uh run organization, so it's gotta be fair for everybody. So keep that in mind. Uh, counselor, uh, Town Counsel Chaplinsky had a question and asked if we can step up the verification process. And Ms. Turnquist explained that the scanner is not being used and frequent violators are spoken to. And our IT person, Jay Baker, is looking into possibly getting a new scanning system that's a little more up to date and that could uh could track um the cars that come in and out of the transfer station. Under Highway at Parks, uh overtime was enacted to assist with eversource for the storm. There were tons of trees down all over town. Um, the trees were cleared and staff worked very hard. Uh, the high school parking lot added some parking spaces and that addition is done. It looks wonderful. If you have an opportunity, take a drive by and take a look at it. The Memorial Park concession stand is mostly complete. Uh, the uh, the exterior work is just about done. They're working on the interior stuff now. Uh, the Memorial Park place gate unfortunately was delayed due to the storm, but they're getting back on track for that as well. The two thousand twenty roads project uh is kicking off soon. The crack ceiling will begin on September twenty-first. And Town Counsel Chaplinsky requested some budget and overtime numbers for the next meeting. Uh, and Committee Member Zoney, who also serves on the Board of Finance, uh chimed in and made it clear that there are rarely budgetary or overtime issues with the Highway Department. But, you know, um, by all means, we can further, we can review that in the future. And uh Mr. Chaplinsky was also concerned about trees that were fallen. I'm sorry, that came down from properties that blocked the roads. And the Highway Department did a good job going out there and cutting up the trees and getting them off the road. But there were some complaints that trees that fell on property A would fall into the road. And after the Highway Department uh or eversource cleared the trees, they were putting trees on property B. So uh we didn't feel, actually, Mr. Chaplinsky didn't feel it was fair to property B, that these huge trees are now placed on someone's front yard. And he asked if we can come up with a process to ensure that this wouldn't occur in the future. And uh this is up for discussion. Uh, Chief Daly and Ms. Turnquist explained it would be a huge undertaking. Uh, but if if residents did have a question or concern with regards to that, they could always call the town. And the town would look at all of these situations on a case-by-case basis. Uh, the master, oh, sure, please.
Could I just uh interrupt?
Madam Chair, go right ahead, yes.
But I just want to acknowledge the fact that Gabe and his crew have been so good. I received a call from uh someone on Spring Street that that exact thing happened. The tree fell across the street, but when the Highway Department came to open the road, they pushed it in front of this person's house. You know, uh, she got in touch with me and I contacted Highway and they came right out within two days. They cleared it up. She was so happy and, you know, they've been so accommodating. And it's a, when you think about the scope and the magnitude of the storm, uh, their response is such, so appreciated. And I hope you extend that thanks uh to them from all of us because it wa, it's a yeoman's job for sure, you know?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I bother Gabe so much. He must see my emails come through. You know, I'll be sitting at my son's ballgame and I'll notice, you know, no garbage cans. And on a Wednesday at eight o'clock at night, I'll send them a text message or an email, and he always responds. And I get mad at him. I tell him not to respond at night, always respond the next day. But they're very, very good at what they do. And and we we appreciate them. We really do. Uh, moving on to the Master Parks Plan. The basketball courts and the tennis courts at all the parks are are completed. They look amazing. We got a uh a nice email a couple of days ago from someone who plays tennis regularly. And this person said that the courts look the best they've ever, they ever have. Uh, so we're very excited about that. They look wonderful. Um, there are now concrete pads under most of the bleachers at the parks. This helps with cleanup. This helps with not damaging the earth underneath the bleachers. Uh, we did order some new bleachers and, because some were damaged during the storm and some were just uh, you know, too old, so they had to get replaced. And uh the fence repairs are ongoing. Uh, some folks have noticed that we had a fountain at the, at the pond at Recreation Park. But unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, the the um, the company that installed it installed the wrong one. So we are working on it. They, they're going to install a bigger fountain that is gonna clear up that green algae, probably, hopefully. Uh, if not, we are gonna take another look at it and figure something else out. But uh it it's in the works. We do know about it and the company that put it in realized that they installed the wrong fountain. So uh it's in the works. Leaf and snow bids are on track and advertised for the year with a due date of September thirtieth. So if anyone's interested in putting in a bid for snow removal or leaf uh removal, they can do so up until September thirtieth. The Engineering Department, Mr. Grapon spoke on the Rails and Trails from Lazy Lane to Plainville. Unfortunately, a lot of these items are at the mercy of the Department of Transportation. They've been long delayed due to the COVID. Um, I guess they're just now getting back to work. I, you know, they were working remotely and things were very difficult, but now they're getting back on track. So a lot of the items I'm gonna discuss in the next couple of seconds. Um, unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the Department of Transportation. Uh, we're waiting for the DOT to complete designs for the uh, the Rails and Trails Lazy Lane to the Plainville line. And then bidding will have to begin on some right-of-ways at some intersections. So that's gonna prolong things as well. Uh, the Plansville Center, we're also waiting on the Department of Transportation. They were delayed due to the COVID. There are right-of-way issues again. CROG will move the project along once this is completed. And at the end of Spring Street Route Ten, everyone's interested, uh, at the intersection of Spring Street and Route Ten, uh, once again, we're at the mercy of the Department of Transportation. They are looking into it. Um, they're, they're delayed due to the COVID, but we want to get that intersection done just as much as everyone else does. Uh, that's been a a thorn in our side for years. So we're very lo, very much looking forward to having that completed. Under the Water Department, the Mill Street Tank is eighty percent complete. There was a three-week delay due to eversource not being able to to work on it due to the storm. Uh, the department is putting off removal of the old tank at this time due to that uh, that three-week delay. And all of the schools in town have their water flushed out before the start of the school year to ensure there were no stagnant water uh in the pipes. I thought that was a a really great idea. Um, and Southington was supposed to host the hazardous waste drop-off this past summer, but unfortunately, that was next because of the pandemic. But we are shooting for next spring. Um, Annette is gonna be on the line a little bit and she can speak a little bit about that. I don't know, Annette, if you wanted to chime in now about there, there was a possibility of something happening in the fall in Bristol. I'm not sure if she was able to ascertain if that's gonna go forward or not. Annette, are you here?
Yeah, she's, she's actually in my office uh with me. Um, we, we haven't confirmed Bristol yet, but I know that she's, she's trying to get that confirmed. But with the pandemic, we're uh, we're not sure about it, but it's scheduled. Uh, and that'll confirm.
Great, thanks, Mark. Madam Chair, that completes my report. Are there any questions?
I I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
Counselor Del Santo, thank you for the thorough report. A lot of the things I was going to ask, you you already addressed. But um, I I want to thank you for looking into the transfer station issue. I think it's an issue that, you know, we need to keep an eye on because I I was the one who actually forwarded the pitcher. And it was just clearly a a commercial company with a large dump trailer unloading their um, their, it looked like their debris from the week. So um, thank you to Jay Baker and and then Mark for taking the initiative. Let's make sure we get a software that works and let's really make sure that Let's make sure we get a software that works and let's really make sure that we're using the transfer station to assist the residents and not subsidizing commercial entities. I think that's important. Um and lastly, you touched on it briefly, but maybe at the next Public Works meeting, we can get some more concrete dates on the Plansville project because that was a huge issue um at Public Works over the last few years. And I know, I know it's a state project, but specifically, I've been getting calls from residents on Hillside Drive. Um you know, because they see all the action, all the digging up of the roads for the utilities and they're kind of waiting and asking like, what's going on? Um and and I keep responding that, look, it's a state project. There's been some delays, but I just want to thank those, those uh residents in that area of Plansville because they're dealing with a lot and it's going to be ongoing for for quite some time. So we, we thank them for their patience and understanding while we undergo this um, the renovation down there. So thanks again, Councilman Del Santo.
Tom, I, I think that a big part of the Hillside Drive area is Eversource. The, they're, they're, I want to say they're replacing gas lines there. So that's why unfortunately, those roads keep getting dug up and then repaired and then dug up and then repaired, so.
Yeah. Eventually, they'll be used as detour roads, so.
Yes, right, right. So uh hang in there, folks on Hillside and Grove Street. Um o- old school neighborhoods. I played a lot of football at that little park on Grove Street. And I was uh, you know, but um hang in there, guys. Uh when it's all over, it's going to look great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh Mike, and we're moving on to the Sewer uh Committee. Um uh Bill Dietzick, you, would you like to uh, Councilman Dietzick, would you like to bring us up to date, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I would like to report that the New York Giants are up ten-three on the Pittsburgh Steelers. Um but more importantly, um the sewer plant is about eighty-six percent completion. Um it, the next battle is going to be contingency. The, the trades are leaving the site, but until then, I, I don't have anything else to report. Um things are looking good with respect to the Sewer Committee.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for Councilman Dietzick? Very good. Um open space, Mr. Chaplinsky.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh Councilperson Dietzick was giving me a hard time earlier because he saw my, it's my IBC soda. I don't know what he thought it was, but it's just cream soda. And we're glad that it's eighty-six percent done and we were hoping for eighty-seven, Bill, so you're going to have to work a little bit harder. All right, so uh eighty-six and a half, we'll give you that. So for open space, uh Madam Chair, um first of all, Southington Police Department had, at the request of the Open Space Committee stepped up some uh some drive-bys, Novix Orchard area where we get some parking uh and some activity there. So I'm happy to report that it seems that things have um have smoothed out there. We're happy that uh everybody's enjoying the property and there's no issues ongoing. Uh we have a a couple initiatives going on. We did maintenance at Novix and we are uh getting ready to do maintenance at other properties uh with some of the fall cuttings. Uh we voted um at the last meeting to um to spend a little bit of the maintenance money and try to fix the Grossky barn. And so we are looking at uh getting some quotations to repair that, uh at least the roof on the barn to prevent water damage uh to the barn. We also uh are continuing our pollinator activity, which I'm, I'm happy to say um was started uh a year or two ago. We started at Novix with the uh pollinator garden that was there. And if you recall, um Mr. and Mrs. Greeno helped with uh the pollinator pathway uh as well as a number of other folks who uh who helped get the pollinator pathway going there. We are taking it to the next step and we uh we voted to allow some uh pollinator activities in the way of looking for some passive areas of open space um to allow a couple beehives. So we're looking to see if we can cite some of those. Uh the um town staff is looking to, looking at spaces where we might be able to do that. Councilperson Paul Mirai has indicated that um the storage shed that is being donated to the Pleasant View area uh is in process of being moved to the Pleasant View location next to the Apollo. So we hope probably in the weeks ahead that that will be uh able to be uh relocated and hopefully we can have a dedication to those who uh made the kind donations. And then I'm happy to report that we do have, uh you know, we continue to have a number of ongoing uh potential activities for open space acquisitions that we continue to pursue.
Very good.
Any questions?
Yes, uh Chris.
Not, not really a question, but just to elaborate a little bit. Um and Annette, I know you, Mark, I know you said Annette is a good few, so Annette, I want to thank you. Um Annette is uh working with us to try to relocate the shed um from, that was built um from a teacher at the high school, David Marchessani and his students. So I want to thank David and all the students for constructing the shed, which is a great partnership that we had with the high school um as well as with the town. So thank you to them. Um and Annette, thank you to you for coordinating along with Gabe Calandra, who is also really um working with us to try to get this relocated. So they also tried to move it themselves, but unfortunately, they weren't able to do that. So I, I appreciate them helping coordinate the movement.
And it would be great because maybe if we could recognize them with some sort of a, a ribbon cutting when it's, when it's there.
That would be great.
And Madam Chair, I'll just uh reinforce what I said earlier in the meeting. Uh a big shout out to the LEAF program, Mark Ramsey, and all the, the team members there at LEAF who did a great job with the uh um the Harvest tow down this past week.
Great, very good. Okay, thank you. Uh um strike one to the Recovery Committee. Michael.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of items. The downtown outdoor dining is going to be extended until January first, two thousand and twenty-one. As long as the businesses down there acknowledge that they would be responsible for any damage caused by the weather. The town asked, as these businesses be smart and if there is snow in the forecast, that tables and barriers should be put away so the clearing of snow could occur. Uh we also approved the motion to uh remove the barriers at Lower Center twenty-four hours before the first forecasted snow event. You know, unfortunately, once those barriers are removed, we're not going to put them back for the rest of the winter. Um I'm hoping we have a warm winter. Hopefully, there's an Indian summer. But this being two thousand twenty, it may snow tomorrow. But um you know, once again, downtown businesses, all businesses, but you know, the restaurants that are downtown, please support them. Shop local, dine local, uh sit outside for as long as you possibly can. Um you know, it's going to get cold soon, but hopefully it'll be enough, uh warm enough for folks to continue to eat outdoors. So restaurants could, you know, have as much capacity as they can between their indoor and outdoor dining. There was an update on the Beaton in Corbin. I know most folks have driven by and taken a look at it. I think it looks fantastic. It's amazing how big that property really is. Um the uh Mr. Perillo stated that cleanup uh has begun and the tanks below ground and above ground have been removed. The boiler and the buildings have been raised and the bricks are being tested. The clean material will be used as fill. We'll reach a point where there'll be no activity and we have to wait for foreclosure date. Uh Mr. Shoda said that this was no small feat. Hundreds of hours have been spent on what, on what will be the gateway into town. And I agree with them. It's uh quite an accomplishment. There was an update on Greenway Commons. Mr. Perillo stated the auction for Greenway, Greenway Commons did not result in a sale. The town has been told there is one potential bidder who has issued a letter of intent, but that bidder is still doing its due diligence. The town alerted local bidders as to the status in his hope that there is some interest as, as this allows uh more time for bidders who might be interested. Any questions on the long term?
Anyone?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh moving right along, Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh this was our first official uh meeting of the Board of Finance for the new fiscal year. So if you, you look at your minutes, please look at uh page three, number three, the first item I wish to discuss. Uh there was a carryover request from the Board of Education. This was money from last fiscal year, which will be carried over into this fiscal year, which will be used uh to the contribution of buying Chromebooks. Uh it's my understanding that there's, they're going to be spending about eight hundred odd thousand dollars on Chromebooks. This is the carryover from last fiscal year and they received a grant for another four hundred plus thousand uh to cover the rest of the costs. Uh that was a carryover. As you know, the town did most of their carryovers in July. Uh this was a carryover that place at the last meeting. The next thing I'd like, any questions on that? Okay, if there's no questions there, please move to page seven. Uh this is the actual uh, the actual information I wish for you to vote on tonight. If you look at the first, the consent agenda, the item I wish you to look at is item F. Uh we have an appropriation for seventy-five thousand dollars for emergency management. This is grant money uh we've obtained uh for our COVID uh improvements, which includes the Plexiglas and other improvements. That's number one. Uh any questions on that? That's seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh number two is a fire department grant for fire suppression. Uh if you remember during the budget process, we budgeted ten percent of this grant and they received a ninety-five, or excuse me, a ninety percent grant for the difference. The total was seventy-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I thank the fire department for being very aggressive in getting this grant. It did save us obviously a substantial amount of money. The next one is a, another grant, and I'll talk about this because I think it's going to affect all of us. Um the Secretary of State's Office gave the town, as well all towns, a grant, in this case approximately forty thousand dollars to cover costs for employees that we're going to have to hire uh to count the absentee ballots or the mail-in ballots. Uh as you may or may not be aware, uh they're assuming we get the normal eighty percent for a presidential election of that vote in Southington. The Secretary of State is advising us that we may get between sixty and seventy percent of that uh is going to be the mail-in ballots. So obviously, there's a lot of ballots and we'll be doing a lot of counting and we're going to have to hire staff for that. Uh we'll be doing it not only Tuesday night, we'll be probably doing it Wednesday and Thursday and possibly Friday with those numbers. So that being said, uh we're one of every town who's going to be in the same boat. Uh so we'll be doing that obviously on election night. That's done with the grant, so this uh, this is obviously state, uh state and federal money uh for this project. Any questions on the Board of Finance minutes?
Does anybody have any questions?
Mark, just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So just on the election, uh presidential election issue, do you see a, do you see an issue getting people to volunteer or to, or, well, not volunteer, but you need to get additional workers, do you see?
Yeah, what we're hoping to do, Val, is this, uh we obviously have people working the polls Tuesday night. So uh we're having people count Tuesday night also. But once the polls on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, obviously those poll workers, we're hoping then to shift from the polls to counting the absentee slash mail-ins. So we're hoping to have enough people. But obviously, uh if you look at the, at the town's website, there's a big section there saying poll workers wanted. So if you know anybody um who's available, uh certainly that Tuesday or days after that, uh please uh contact the Elections Division through our town website because I know the uh they'd be very welcome to uh to talk to anybody who's interested in working the polls.
Okay. No, they don't need any kind of experience, right?
Well, they're, 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 they're taught. Um so they uh, if they want to do it, uh there's a, there's an instruction session that'll be done by our Elections Department for them. So they do not have to have done it before.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions on that? Okay, the next item is the uh Southington Police Department roof. Uh this was a discuss of the Public Works Committee. I am going to turn this over to our uh Public Works Director and uh also uh Jay, who is the administrator for the uh, for the bidding system that we use for this. Uh so before I turn it over to Annette, um Tommy touched on this earlier. Uh I know I did this a couple of months ago with Kari, but uh once again, I want to introduce you to someone you almost all know, Annette Turnquist. Uh she, we've been uh lucky enough to have her employed by the town for over twelve years. Uh she has what we call come up from the ranks. Uh she started out as the Assistant Town Engineer. Uh then she was the Town Engineer, then she was the Superintendent of Highway Parks. And now she is our new Public Works Director and I couldn't be prouder, prouder uh than to introduce her tonight to you as her new position of Public Works Director. Annette?
Welcome, Annette.
We'll clap for that remotely.
Wow. Hope I can live up to that introduction. Okay, so the Police Department roof, um let me just give you a, a little bit of background. Um last year, the Garland Company did a study of all the town roofs and the Police Department roof was identified as the priority. Uh the estimate for a full replacement was between about four hundred and twenty-eight thousand and five hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um we sent the Police Department roof info to the Gordian Group, who administers the EZIQC process. BMP Construction is the EZIQC contractor for roof work. I believe they're out of Danbury. Uh their quote is three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents, which includes work to the chimney, exterior duct work um on the low slope area and three roof, uh rows of ice and water shield. Um so their price came in under um what the roof report did. Uh we have worked with BMP before. We've been happy with their work. Um just to give you a couple examples, they did some structural work and overhead door replacement at the Highway Parks garage. They're currently working on the concession restroom building renovation at Memorial Park and a few other smaller projects um they've done as well. Um I would recommend the approval of BMP Construction for the PD roof replacement for four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which includes just under a ten percent contingency. I understand there are some questions regarding the EZIQC process. So I've asked Jay Duhamel from the Gordian Group to talk briefly about the process. Hopefully, he's on. Jay, are you on?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, yes, I'm here.
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
Um so first of all, thank you everyone for having me uh at your meeting this evening. Um Annette asks, uh said that uh some people on the board had some questions, so I'm here to answer questions unless you would like me to go through a brief uh overview of how we work. What would you prefer, Annette?
Jay, I'd like you to give a brief presentation if you could.
Sure, absolutely. Um so the Gordian Group, we've answered a, we, we administer contracts for the Capital Region Council Governments or CROG. Um and the town of Southington is a member of CROG, so therefore they have access to our contracts. The Gordian Group answered a request for proposal from um CROG um eleven years ago. Um and we've had a contract with them ever since. We did, uh CROG just to go out for bid for our contracts again last fall and we were awarded the contracts again. We're in the process of signing those contracts. Um so that's how our contract gets initiated. Once our contract is in place, um every two years, CROG asks us to um administer um the EZIQC program by putting out to bid contracts um for contractors and site contractors across the state. Um so every other October coming up in a couple of weeks, we'll be going through this process. And we uh, we help CROG um advertise in local newspapers across the state, put on the Connecticut DAS website, put on the Connecticut DOT website and on CROG's website, the advertisement, just as you would see in a traditional public bid process. When the contractors answer that mandatory pre-bid meeting um from that advertisement, they go through the process and we train them how to put together a bid for construction services for members of CROG. Once those, uh, once the lowest responsive responsible bidder is determined, um that contractor is now on call to do any work for any CROG member in the region. They're awarded a contract. If you picture Connecticut as a rectangle, there's four quadrants, northeast, southeast, northwest and southwest. Um we split the state up that way and there's one contractor in each region to do the work. Currently, the contractor um that encompasses Southington is BMP Construction, as uh Net just um explained. And any work that the uh town of Southington wants to go through the EZIQC process, that's been a uh competitively bid process, um we come out and we do have a scope meeting with the facility manager, the contractor and somebody from Gordian, usually myself, um and we discuss the scope of work. We come up with a detailed scope of work. The contractor then takes the, our construction task catalog, which is a preset uh volume of uh prices of construction services um and takes those tasks out of the construction task catalog, applies the quantity to it and applies their competitively bid adjustment factor and compiles what we call a price proposal. Gordian then reviews that price proposal for accuracy, not on the town's behalf and not on the contractor's behalf, but that's accurate to the scope of work. Once that review is complete, we then forward that proposal to the uh town and they can decide to act on it, to pass on it, or to just move forward with another procurement method. Um there's no cost to the town for that process. Um we've been working with the town of Southington for many years. Um we appreciate all the work that um we've uh um done with the town of Southington. Um and we hope to continue that relationship long into the future. That's pretty much, that's really that ten thousand foot view of um what we do and how we administer our program. Um so if anybody has any specific questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Uh does anyone, Tom, did you have any questions for him?
Uh I do, Madam Chair, and thank you to um, to Jay and Annette for their descriptions. Um I do have a few questions, so I apologize in advance if I. I do have a few questions, so I apologize in advance if I, if I jump around a little bit. But hopefully between Jay and Annette, we can address the council and the public of some of the items that I want to make sure get addressed before the vote this evening. First, we, the, Jay talked about the different advertisements that go on for, for the specific project, in this case the project. I'd like to get an understanding of how many companies inquired about our, our posting for this job. That would be number one. Secondly, as we're all aware from reading this report from January 2019, there are several issues on the police department roof. And you know, unfortunately, this roof is only 18 years old. So that tells me that there were some serious either workmanship issues or some design issues, possibly a combination of both, who knows? But the, the thing that I ask the question is, did we, have we considered a metal roof or some, some sort of a more of a commercial style application for the police department, such as like the water department? And I know it's more expensive, but I want to know if that avenue was investigated, questioned or brought up. I did read also in the report that, you know, there's a 25-year warranty on this new roof. So hopefully we don't need to use the warranty, but under that, those assumptions, we can, we can, we can look forward and say this expenditure will last 25 years. I also would like to hear from, from Jay about how we as a town are going to be comfortable using BMP Construction when everything I've seen on them, and I could be wrong, points to the fact that this is a site work general contractor. So how are we going to handle subcontractors on the job? Or how is that going to be addressed when we get to it? And then lastly, if we look at the, the report from the Garland, there, there's one theme that seems to stick out big time. And I know the town council even addressed this a few years back. There's a serious ice damming problem at the police department. So, and as any roofing company knows, the ice dams are not necessarily caused by roofing materials. There's an insulation problem over there at the police department and it's mentioned several times in the report. So do we have a plan to not just replace the roof, but take a look at the inside of that building and the insulation issues that are going on? Because that's, that seems to be causing a lot of the issues. Let me just, give me one second. I have, might have had one other. Yep, roof insulation. Oh, and then on page, page 26 of the report in regards to the regular asphalt shingle area, there's a comment here. Investigate if roof areas are properly ventilated, if, you know, and then if modifications are going to be needed. So kind of already talked about that. And then on the, one more. On page 20, modification of the existing duct work should be explored to provide better access to the roof area. So is that included in the price? I, I'm assuming it is. The budget estimate also includes cost for mediation if asbestos is found. So if there's no asbestos found, does that make the price go up or down or, or what? So those are kind of all of the comments I had when reading over these items.
I was told one or two questions. I'm just kidding. No, those are, those are all great questions and I appreciate them. And, and I, I got notes written down and I'll try to answer them in order and if I skip over something, please let me know. Yep, so the, the posting. So we advertise with CROG. We, last time we advertised was October of 2018. And what we do is we advertise for the contractors and again, who's ever the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, that contractor now is on call to do work for those members of that region for the next two years. So at that advertisement, when we did that posting, there was about 15 general contractors in the room that answered the advertisement for the, to bid on the EZIQC contracts.
Can I just pause there?
Sure, absolutely.
So that was in October of 2018. So my question is specifically to our project. Was there any other company that responded to our project?
So again, with the EZIQC contracts, we bid once and then it's a two, it's a, it's a two-year contract or it's really a one-year base contract with a one-year option. So we bid, we go through the bidding process once every two years. And after that bidding process, whoever's determined to be the lowest responsible, responsible contractor, all the other contractors are going away. We, we satisfied the procurement process, the competitively bidding process at that point. And now that contractor is on call to do any work for any town in that quadrant.
Okay, so just to be clear, you, we picked this BMP Construction before the roof report was released in Jan- January of 2019?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thank you. That answers that part.
Yep, the metal roof, we did discuss the metal roof. But it was all determined that it was going to be too costly. So we did pursue providing a price proposal for the work, for the work and also dramatically change the aesthetics of the building. So between those two reasons, we did not go down that path, but it was a discussion at the time when we were preparing the detailed scope of work in the proposal.
Now, what does, what does too costly mean?
Everybody was at the joint scope meeting, which was the Director of Public Works at the time, myself, BMP and the roofing contractor. We, we brought up the question, would you want to consider an alternative roof method, product like a standing seam roof? And everybody in their professional opinion just made the assumption that the roof, the metal roof would be too costly over the budget that was put in place for this project.
So we don't know if that means 15, we don't know if that means 50% more, 100% more, 200% more?
Correct, correct. We, we didn't go down that road. We certainly can, but we didn't.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
If, if that's something you want to pursue, we'd be more than happy to provide your price for that work.
Okay. And I guess, I guess my final question, I, I know I, I've exceeded my question.
I'm just kidding.
Are there, are there any other commercial roof projects that BMP has, has performed over the last however many years that, that we can cross-reference?
Sure, we just did, um, we just did a big EP, it wasn't EPDM, I'm sorry, it was a TPO roof on Weir's Beach down in New London. That would be the, the closest size roof that we just did with them that you could reference. They've also installed a couple of roofs in Danbury at some metal buildings. They just did Canton Town Hall Roof, which is a historical roof up in, right on Main Street in Canton. Those are the ones that come to the top of my mind. I know there are others. I just don't have them at the tip of my tongue.
Good, thank you.
And the Canton Roof one would be architectural asphalt shingles, which would be similar to your roof.
Right.
If you want me, I can put you, if you would like, I can put you in contact with Glenn Casano. I could give Annette his, her, Glenn's information. He's the Facilities Director for the town of Canton.
I think your explanation satisfied my question, unless other counselors want to get documented.
All right. Regarding the warranty, yes, you'll receive a manufacturer's warranty on the shingles for 25 years, which is a standard warranty for shingles. And then the EPDM roof, there is a, a 25-year warranty on that, which you'll get that from the manufacturer as well, whether it's GAF, Carlyle, Goodyear, one of the, whichever company we submit on for, for the work.
Yep.
Let's see, duct work. So we are rerouting the duct work and we're replacing all the insulation on the duct work because it is laying on the flat roof. And there's no space between the duct work and the flat roof, which probably prematurely shortened the life of that EPDM roof. So we are going to change the configuration of that and re-insulate it.
Good. Just, just for clarity for the people, when you say the EPDM, that's the flat roof.
I'm sorry, yes, that's, EPDM is, it's a, it's a rubber roof that's cemented together at the seams. And in essence, if you think about it, an inner tube, that's what, that's what's going to be up on the flat part of the roof. That is over near the chimney of the police department. We're also going to be repointing the chimney and waterproofing the chimney. Just in short, I know you didn't ask me that, but I just, that's in that area of that flat roof.
That would be daddy because I didn't, I was upstairs.
Oh.
BMP and a site work contractor. So historically BMP was a, a site contractor. He does, still does have a site division. He's been in the general construction world for probably just north of five years and he joined us in EZIQC two years ago and has successfully completed all jobs that we've given him. We even had a contractor that was not performing in the Southeast region of the state and we asked BMP to step up and he took over those GC projects down in the southeast while also taking care of the northwest quadrant of the state. So he was covering half the state for us for about a year and he, I can give you plenty of town managers and facilities directors that have been pleased with his work and he's really come a long way and really done well for us in the past two years.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Paul.
Yeah, Jay, can you tell us, how does, how does Gordian make money? What do you guys, you guys are, do you guys take a flat rate? What's your play in this and how do you make money?
Sure. So when the general contractors, I don't know if the town council has a copy of the proposal, but in the proposal, every single task in the proposal has a quantity, then a unit price and then the contractor's competitively bid adjustment factor. In that competitively bid adjustment factor is Gordian and CROG's fee. It's embedded in that, so you don't get another bill at the end of the project. It's embedded in the cost of the, the project and Gordian and CROG split a fee of 7.25%.
Right. Anything else from any member of the council?
I got two other questions that the council member asked that I didn't get over yet. The insulation of the roof. So the roof is, actually three questions, I'm sorry. The insulation of the roof, there is rigid insulation between the structure and the sheathing that the shingles are nailed to. It's a rigid insulation. That's the design of the building. And there was what we found through our investigation that looks like there's only one row of ice and water shield around the perimeter of the building. Because of the size of the overhangs, we're going to be applying three rows of, of ice and water shield, which will in essence get you about eight feet up the roof with the overlap, which will bring you far past the exterior wall, the plane of the exterior wall, which the purpose of ice and water shield is to eliminate ice damming, which will solve that problem. And then the insulation, again, we did not address that because it was deter, because if you look at the design of the building, the metal roof trusses, that insulation board with plywood sheathing applied to it is on, sitting on the metal roof trusses. And if you look at the underside of the roof, which is that insulation board, you look straight down onto the acoustical ceiling tiles of the building. So there is no place to apply more insulation. A solution would be to do spray insulation, the whole inside of the police department. I don't think that's needed. I think the ice damming situation with the ice and water shield solution should solve the problem. I think if you start talking about putting spray foam insulation on the inside of the building between all the roof trusses, you're talking about large, large dollars replacing ceilings and, and putting in spray insulation on a building that met the environmental requirements at the time it was built. So I, I think you're going to be spending a lot of money for not a lot of gain, considering something like that.
Thank you, Jay.
And then venting was the last question, was the, the venting of the roof. Again, there is, there's vents embedded in the insulation, between the insulation and the OSB board sheathing that's applied to that insulation. There are channels in it in order to vent the, the roof. There should be no ridge vent on this roof because again, your ceilings are open right up to the attic space and you'd just be basically heating the outside.
Okay, we're going to move on. Tom, are you close to that?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on right now. Thank you, Annette and thank you, Jay. I appreciate your input. Very good. Town manager, do you have anything else for us?
Just, Madam Chair, we will be having executive session tonight and we'll be coming out of executive sessions for one action item. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Town Attorney's Report. Jeremy, are you, we can't hear you, Jeremy.
He's not on mute anymore. We just can't hear him.
No, we can't hear you, Jeremy. He's not on mute, Paul?
No, he's not on mute anymore. He was able to take himself off mute, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Looks like he's just giving it a try. Jeremy, Jeremy, I just sent you the link to, on your phone. Maybe you can click on the link and join via your phone and give your update. Do we want to maybe go to the next item, Madam Chair, and then come back to him? How do we?
Well, the next, the next items, the next item is public communication. So, yeah. So you know what, Jeremy, we're going to go to public communication. We'll take your report right after public communication. You'll get a chance to either call back.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Yes, great, 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 great. Go ahead, Jeremy.
All right, we're going to try this over the phone. Briefly, Madam Chair, I just had some zoning issues I wanted to update the town council on.
And Jeremy, just turn your, maybe turn your volume off on your computer.
Is that better?
Better.
All right. Sorry about that. There's two zoning issues that I just wanted to mention briefly. And why they're unique is usually our zoning issues are able to be solved through whether we have violation letters that are sent out or cease and desist orders, but I believe we have two that may have to go to a lawsuit. I cannot get really in detail about the, the exact location of the parcels because we haven't set out the litigation yet. But one of them is a resident running a commercial business out of a private residency, which we receive a lot of complaints about, done a lot of investigations on that and we believe this issue is not going to be resolved unless we file the lawsuit, which we anticipate is coming soon. The other issue is a residence that was advertising for parties at their private residency through websites and whatnot, which is in violation of our zoning code as well as in violation of the governor's executive orders. We did send some cease and desist letters and we are following up to see if we have to file a lawsuit against that homeowner as well. Like I said, why these are unique and why I felt like I wanted to update the council on it is because we don't usually have to resort to bringing litigation and civil lawsuits against residents. But if our, our warnings and our cease and desist letters aren't working, we, we do have to turn to that. Does anybody have any questions? I, I'm not sure if I can, like I said, mention any specifics, but I am willing to take any questions from any council members.
Yeah, I think we should postpone any questions until executive session in case there's, in case you'll be involved in executive session, Jeremy.
All right, Madam Chair, I don't have anything further to add tonight to my report.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, let's move on to public communication. We would ask any member of the public to stay within a five-minute time limit. Please give your name and address and please be respectful. We will be respectful back with you. And we thank you for coming out today. Anybody? Paul, are you going to just go ahead and, and start with folks that are on their computers or are you going to?
Yeah. If that's okay, Madam Chair, because the folks who are on the computer, I'll just explain, the folks who are on the call, that is, we can't tell who you are. So in order for us to identify a single person who wants to speak, we have to open up the phone lines for everybody and then ask you to, to start to, to dialogue. So if it's okay, what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, I'd like to leave the folks who are on the telephone, leave them on mute and we will get to them later. We will start with the people who are on their computers. who are on their computer. And uh, if you are on your computer and would like to talk now for the five minute, up to the five-minute timeframe, you may take yourself off of mute and go ahead and speak. I would also ask if you would like to speak uh next in line, just type your name in the uh text box. That will come to me directly and I will facilitate each person in line and make sure we take them in the order at which they type their name in and say, you know, that you'd like to talk next. So is there anybody out there who would like to speak? You could take yourself off of mute if you're on the computer. Going once for the computers? Going twice? Okay, looks like the folks who are on the computers are not gonna talk. Madam Chair, if you'd like, I'll open the, the phone lines.
Please do.
Okay, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, seven. There might be seven or eight people. So let's unmute everybody. And is, is there anybody on the phone who would like to talk now uh for up to five minutes during councilmatic communications? Anybody on the phone? That would like to speak during councilmatic communications? Can somebody on the phone just give us a test to say, hi, I'm here, so we know that you're, that, that everything's working okay?
Paul, I'm here.
Okay. Okay, so it, it sounds like the technology's working. That's great. One last call. Is there anybody on the phone line who would like to now speak during councilmatic, uh, during uh public communications before we close it? Okay, Madam Chair, it doesn't seem as though there's anybody who wants to talk.
Last call. All right. Well, thank you all for coming, by the way. There were uh, we have thirty-six participants, so we appreciate your time. Thank you, everyone. Uh, so let's move right along into old business action on the Board of Finance Minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the September ninth, two thousand twenty Board of Finance Minutes.
Yep, Tom, you, okay, the motion is accepted.
I'll second, Madam Chair, Del Santo.
Okay, uh, Mike Del Santo. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, oh, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, item B, action on Suddington Police Department Roof Contract. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Paul's made the motion. Do I have a second? Chris is your hand up?
I'll second.
Uh, Chris has seconded it. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any oppositions?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so it's eight, one. Any other opposition? Thank you. Goes down eight, one. Thank you, everybody. Uh, new business, tax refunds, Val?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the tax refunds as outlined in our packet tonight.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mike, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, tax refunds are done. Uh, Mark, a par, uh, appointment part to the Parking Authority?
Madam Chair, I've been given the name of Jerry Triano. He is hereby appointed to the Parking Authority to a term expiring November twenty twenty-one.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Item number two is Cable TV Committee. I'm looking for cable on that, for the Cable TV Committee. Somebody wish to table it?
I'll move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hopefully, it was, sometimes it's difficult to get someone for Cable TV Committee. We'll, we'll keep looking.
We need the competition in town, I'll tell you.
I, I think so, yep. Uh, item three, Persons with Disabilities Commission. Uh, this, uh, I believe someone has a name.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Nicole Riquadon, please.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Nicole, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Uh, item four, the uh Ethics Board, Mike Del Santo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Gloria Brown and Patricia Johnson for the Ethics Board. Uh, both parties.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Motion by uh me, Madam Chair, and second by Mr. Chaplinsky.
Okay, any discussion on this? Well, congratulations, uh, all those in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, congratulations Gloria and Pat. I'm sure you'll do a great job. Okay, moving right along, we have um the uh, uh, item five, the Seed Commission. Um, uh, Tom Lombardi.
Madam Chair, I will uh put forth the name of Juanita Champagne. She is a local Realtor and a former Board of Education member.
Good. Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul, I see that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody. Very good. Appreciate it. Um, uh, right now, uh, we're finished with the appointments. Uh, I need a, I need uh a motion to move into executive session.
Madam.
Uh, before we do that, let me just say to the public and to uh the press that are here, uh, we will be exiting this meeting. We'll be going to our executive meeting, executive session, but we will be coming back into open session uh once we're finished with our executive session. So, um, Jim, do you have a, do you have a motion, Jim Morelli?
Madam Chair, this is a point of order. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to uh town staffer Jay Baker. Uh, he's gonna keep the meeting open with a little notice when we move into executive session to let people know who are on the line, that we're in executive session and that we'll return. Anybody who's gonna participate in an executive session should leave this meeting formally. You should log off to this meeting and you should uh use the link for executive session, the separate link, and log into the meeting that way.
Okay, we're heading out into cyberspace right now. I hope it all works. Jim, did you have, wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
I'd like to make that motion that we move to executive session.
Thank you. Well, that means we're gonna be barring the press and the public, but we're inviting uh Attorney Sheffey, uh Attorney Taylor, uh Mark Shoda. Is there anyone else, Mark? I don't think so. As members of the council. Okay, very good. Uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
See you all in executive session.
See you on the flip side.
Where you going? Don't find me. I'm here today. You see today? What you doing? You scare me when you exit. I don't understand. Mm-hmm. You can go home. You're going to like this. Fight me.
Hello? To tell you, I'm pregnant.
Oh, what will you take it? Why you have to, um, just give him another baby? You just have two. So why do, why, why do you just pick that up?
That's right. I'm tired.
Because, because you just got two.
You don't-
Why do you want to fight? Why you want to give him another baby and then give him one of your babies instead of one?
Baby, we would never replace more than one. Oh, baby, we would never replace you in Amaya.
(noise)
(noise)
Your call has been forwarded to the main voice menu.
Please look out.
(noise) (noise) (noise)
Hello. What's everyone up to? Oh, that's right. Hey.
See, Vicky, you were concerned about going back and forth. You did it.
I, if it wasn't for Chiplinsky, I would still be wandering the streets of Southington.
Cyber streets.
The cyber streets of Southington. Are we all on?
Control room?
Uh, looks like we've got Mike Criss, Tom Vow. I don't see Chris Pulis, Bill Dietzick. I see Bill Dietzick, sorry.
Vow's there, baby.
I don't see Chris either.
No, Chris Pulis is here. Chris is on, Chris is on.
Yes, he's on. Chris Pulis Evans, he's on, Bill is on.
Vow, Paul.
Okay. Bill on, Paul, I think so.
It looks like everybody's on.
Very good.
Uh, let me just check through the meeting. Yep, recording is still in progress, Madam Chair.
Good job. I think that was going for us.
Thank you for watching over, Jay.
All right, so, so you're all set now, Paul?
Thank you, appreciate it, Jay.
Well, lock up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right now, uh, as we, uh, we're reopening our, uh, town council meeting for action from the, uh, executive, uh, session. And, um, so I would need a motion, Chris, uh, Chris Palmeri, would you make, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I'd like to renew the town manager's contract and extend the contract till June 30th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Madam Chair.
Well, I see all Paul's hands, so I'm gonna recognize Paul. And, uh, all of those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
But he not approving this? No abstentions?
I wanted to tell, I wanted to ask Mark if he had any boxes in his office.
If he had it.
Any empty boxes? Had any empty boxes in his office? I wanted to tease him a little.
Hey, Madam, Madam Chair, if I may say, uh, thank you for your vote of confidence. I've enjoyed my...
Can I just declare, can I just declare it? Can I just, can I make the announcement, please?
Go ahead.
So, uh, in light of the unanimous decision, uh, Mr. Shota, we ex, we would extend an invitation to you, uh, to continue as, uh, town manager for the town of Southington until June of 2024. And we sincerely hope you serve every day, uh, but it's out there. So, uh, congratulations, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that you and I have a, you and I have a meeting on Wednesday, and I'll be happy to execute that extension with you on Wednesday. And, uh, once, uh, once again, thank you. Uh, I had the pleasure of working for, uh, a large number of councils. And, uh, I, uh, certainly we've had our, our challenges in Southington over the last, I'm gonna say, many, many years. I've been working for the town, uh, but thank you for your vote of confidence. And I'm certainly looking forward to the next, uh, four odd years. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mark, very much. And I want to thank everybody tonight.
ABC, Mark, always be closing.
A difficult meeting, but, um, I want to just thank you all for your professionalism. And, uh, it's, it's been a, a joy to serve. And, uh, and you all reflect very well on your parents, I must say. I was talking, I had a great discussion with Val these last couple of days, and, and we talked about our parents, right, Val? And how, what it was, I think that is to have parents that love us enough, you know? So you all reflect good on your parents, amen. All right, uh, listen, so can I have a motion to, uh, to, uh, uh, end this wonderful meeting tonight?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, everyone, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sue, for standing up.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mark.
Jesse, thank you.
Congratulations.
Go to your head, Shota.
Thank you.
Congrats, Mark.
Good luck, Mark, congrats.
Good job, Mark.